Hi, this is, uh, we're ready.
Okay, here we go. Okay, I'm gonna call tonight's meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First order of business is the roll call and seating of alternates. I'm gonna ask our clerk, Anthony Homicki, if he'll call the roll.
Chairman Hammer?
Here.
Bruny?
Here.
I'm here. Commissioner Brecklin?
Here.
Commissioner Dean? Not. Commissioner Drake?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Hughes? Commissioner Giafredo?
Here.
Commissioner Arcalini?
Here.
Commissioner Laurie? Not here. Commissioner Thompson? Not here.
Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen.
All right, so for, for right now, we've got nine here, so, um, our one present alternate, Mr. Arcalini, will be seated on this application. Before we start, we have two public hearings tonight on our agenda. For those of you who may not have been here for other meetings in the past, I just wanna take a minute to explain the procedures that we use. When we get to each public hearing item, we will call the applicant up to the podium over there and give them an opportunity to present the application. Following that, the commission will have an opportunity to ask questions, and there will be an opportunity for anybody here, member of the public, to speak. If you'd like to speak at that point in the meeting, we'll ask you to come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please address any comments if members of the public are speaking to the commission, and we will listen carefully, and if there's follow-up that we need to do with the applicant, we will. And also remember that once the public hearing is closed, we're not able to take any further information from the applicant or the public. So while the hearing is open, it's everyone's opportunity to comment, ask questions. With that said, we're gonna go to our first public hearing item, application 2198, Fresh Market Inc., seeking a special permit in accordance with Section 5.8 alcoholic beverages of the Weathersfield zoning regulations for a grocery beer liquor permit from the state of Connecticut at 1065 Silas Dean Highway. And I believe that's part of a larger parcel identified as 991 to 1129 Silas Dean Highway. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Megan Hope. I'm an attorney with Alter Pearson &amp; Hope in Glastonbury, Connecticut, here tonight representing the applicant in the referenced application, the Fresh Market Inc. They are the tenant, proposed tenant for 1065 Silas Dean Highway, sorry. That is the center portion of the Weathersfield Shopping Center. They're going to be occupying the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond tenant space, which is located in the center of the shopping center. Okay. So, just a little housekeeping before I get started. We did send out the required mailing to the abutters, and I did deliver their certificate of mailing to the planning office. I also posted the sign close to the entrance sign for the shopping center. And I do have an affidavit of the sign posting that I'll just pass over now. Your side isn't working?
We have copies in our package, actually.
Okay, this side is working.
Yes.
It's everything that's on the PowerPoint was... What? Okay. So, the site is about 20 acres located on the left side, or the west side, sorry, of the Silas Dean Highway. It has a large existing shopping center and a medical building. And as I mentioned previously, Fresh Market is proposing to take over that center portion of the existing shopping center. Their tenant space will be about 30,300 square feet in total. It's right straight ahead when you come in, that entrance drive, Signal View Drive off of the Silas Dean Highway. As you can tell by the aerial, obviously, there's commercial development located across the street on the other side of the Silas Dean Highway. And to the west and the south, we do have some existing residential development along Maple Street and down along Mill Street as well. Okay. This is a street view of the site at the intersection, light of Silas Dean Highway and Signal View Drive. Obviously, I've highlighted in the center there where the proposed Fresh Market space will be. The green shows you where the sign is gonna be. That sign package was approved earlier in 2024. Fresh Market has been under construction on this tenant fit-out since January. They had a long holdup as they were waiting for a transformer from Eversource, waiting months for the transformer, but they finally have received that, and so they're approaching the end of the construction period for that. Okay, we are requesting a grocery beer liquor permit for this grocery store. As I mentioned, the store is over 30,000 square feet. The actual area that the beer will be placed in is in that, the corner of the corner right here of the grocery store. Very limited size, it's about 250 square feet, so less than 1% of the total area of the grocery store, very much accessory to the predominant retail use of non-alcoholic beverages. But just to give you a sense of where that located, the main entrance off the parking lot is located here, and we have all the aisles and display areas here, and the alcohol sales are proposed to be tucked in this corner here. So it's about 38 linear feet of shelving, very de minimis to the overall size of the grocery store. Your regulations are very specific regarding alcohol sales. What you require an applicant to do is to look at the surrounding area, look at schools, places of worship, other liquor sales in the area. We wanna determine if there's an undue concentration of liquor sales or alcohol sales or uses in the area, and also, is it disrupting the quiet pursuit of education and religion in the area? Obviously, this area of town is very much developed and established. I did go on to the state's licensing website, and I basically searched by liquor permits in the Weathersfield zip code and looked at what was in our area. But when I searched within 500 feet of the proposed Fresh Market, I did discover five liquor permits. They all really are accessory to other food uses in the area. We've got different restaurants within the existing plaza. We have one across the street, Angry Tofu, and then we do have a package store also located in the plaza as well. So we don't believe that there's an undue concentration of alcohol in this area. I think when you do visit this area, it's very much established as a commercial area, and those existing alcohol uses are subservient to everything else that's going on in the area. There is one church located down on Mill Street. It's down here in this square building here. Again, we don't believe that the proposed, you know, de minimis beer sales within the grocery store are gonna have any impact on that church located close to the site. So, just a couple of operational questions. As I mentioned, we're nearing the end of construction. We think we'll be ready for our CO this month, and would likely open sometime in April. We are anticipating being open seven days a week with sort of normal hours. Obviously, the liquor or beer sales will be limited based on the state regulations, so we'll have to stop at 6:00 PM on Sunday and earlier on Saturday. But our normal operating hours will be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM for the week. And just to reiterate, this only is for a beer permit. We're not allowed to sell any other liquor or wine. That's really restricted by the state. And following an approval from this commission, we would submit to the Department of Consumer Protection, go through their whole placarding process where we put the big sign up that says we're gonna sell liquor there, and go through that process before being able to have the beer sales in the grocery store. But I did confirm with the client, all the staff is trained in carting, you know, individuals trying to purchase the alcohol, and they have to actually enter the informations from the license into the cash register system as people are checking out. So we believe that our application satisfies all the requirements of 5.8 and also Section 8, as well, the special permit requirements. I'm happy to answer any questions from the public or the commission.
Thank you, Attorney Hope. Any commission members have questions at this point?
Well, you're only selling beer. You're not selling it for consumption, right?
Correct.
Because I noticed you have the restaurant up front, so I take it that's like you buy your food, you eat there, it's not...
Correct. Right. We're only getting a liquor permit for the sale of alcohol to be consumed off premises. If we were doing an on-premises liquor permit, that would be something different. I'd have to come back and ask for you guys to approve that as well, so... But that's not part of our proposal.
Any other commission questions? Okay, if not, I'm gonna ask, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this particular application? Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Yes, sir, if you come up and identify yourself, please.
Good evening. How are you? My name's Kevin Walsh. I live in town, 18 Nathaniel Drive. Don't come to many of these meetings, but I just wanna say that I am grateful for everyone's service on this committee. You do this free, you spend time away from your families, perhaps that's intentional, but you come here and do this service for us, and I'm grateful. I just happened to notice that this was going in literally this weekend, and my wife had said to me, "What a great use of that property." I would probably guess that, and I'm not here in any capacity, I'm only here as a resident tonight, no one's paying for my services, but we were actually discussing how this is such a great addition to the town. I'm assuming that, like most things, people need to sell alcohol to make a go of a business, and that's probably why they have this particular section of the store. And if it means that we get a quality retailer in that particular space for this particular application, it doesn't seem to be much of an imposition, given the fact there's so many other stores in that plaza that sell alcohol already. So, for what it's worth, as a resident, I would ask this particular board to approve as offered. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this application? Last call, anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this application? Seeing none, are there any further questions from any members of the commission? Tony?
Just make an observation, the town planners' observations are nominal. I don't know if he has anything to add.
Yes.
No, I came to the same conclusion, that it is a small area within a much larger shopping plaza. There is only one package store anywhere near, and I do think it meets all the requirements specified in Section 5.8 in terms of an accessory use for alcohol sales. And specifically, as we talked about a few meetings ago, it will just be for a grocery beer permit, no liquor, no wine. Just a point of clarification, too, for those who might wonder.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other commission hands up at this point, Attorney Hope, do you have anything further you'd like to say?
Nothing further.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Peter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing is closed. Would anyone like to make a motion on the application?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve 2198, 25Z for the Fresh Market, a special permit in accordance with 5.8, the alcohol beverages of the Weathersfield zoning regulations, for grocery beer liquor permit in the state of Connecticut. If there's anything else that needs to be added to it.
There is a second. Dave, second. Is there any discussion on this? I guess I would, I would just, from my own perspective, say that it's a, you know, it's a small incidental convenience type of use for the people who are gonna be in the large grocery store. It's in the rear of the store, so if somebody... Typically, it would seem the people who are gonna buy beer there are people who are already in the store buying food, and if somebody just wants to buy liquor by itself, they've got plenty of choices of standalone package stores as an alternative. So it seems to me to be a pretty low-impact type of situation as well. Anyone else? If not, Tony?
I just think it's important that, to note that the presentation was very thorough, very complete. I think it was important to know where the other locations were, so I compliment the application process.
Yeah, actually, I noted the same, Tony, and, I mean, just for the future, this is a great standard to, you know, to go by. I mean, she identified all the adjacent uses, you know, because we always wonder about clustering, and this is very clear. And she has identified that there was a church in a corner, which I guess I didn't know, but that all makes sense. This is the way it should be done. So Dave, I think, I think as a standard, this is probably what we wanna do in the future if someone comes forward.
And I'll just point out that this is all public information, very easy. This looks like the town's GIS system, and if you can just go online, get the licensing permit information.
Great.
Attorney Hope, thank you for a thorough presentation. If there's nothing further, we have a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Application is approved. Okay, next application is number 2199, Antonio Linochi, seeking modification to special permit 2115-22, previously approved for a change of use. I'm just gonna wait till the noise of the screen stops. Okay, the applicant is seeking a modification to a previously granted special permit. It was approved for a mixed use with associated site improvements, landscape waiver, alcoholic beverages, and outdoor seating at 164 to 166 Main Street, and there were conditions of approval by the commission as part of that approval. And I would just note, for anyone who's here, the application had a period of time attached to it where the applicant was gonna be able to operate and then come back to us so that we could make any adjustments or address any issues, and they were delayed, as I understand it, in their... They have not yet started the use, so they're back to essentially reactivate, reapply for that permit which had expired due to the passage of time. But with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant, ask you to please identify yourself, and I guess in addition to, as part of your presentation, there's some members of the commission who weren't on the commission last time, so if you could also give some background in terms of what you presented the first time through, and, you know, any, anything that you wanna add to that, and modifications or adjustments that you might be looking for.
Sure. Larissa Lake.
Antonio Linochi.
And we live at 443 Woodland Street in South Glastonbury. We have been working on this project for probably close to five years now. We're still not in the clear yet, but we're working towards it. We just got some inspections done that are gonna hopefully catapult us a little bit further, but we did notice that there was some expiration, so we wanted to just go back to that. So we're seeking a renewal for the patio seating.
For the four tables.
Yeah, for the four. We're not asking for any more tables, the same that was originally approved. It was four tables with four chairs, I believe. So that's the first part. And then the second part was, we're requesting the removal of the gate, which was the access control. And then we submitted a letter from the fire marshal regarding that. And the third is that we are requesting the hours of operation to be revised to 8:00 to 12:00 AM, and we're probably gonna be closed one, possibly two days a week. It was 8:00 to 8:00, I believe.
Could you, could you take a step back and please, please describe the various portions of the interior of the building and the operations that would be occurring?
So, we have a, I believe it was a 2,000-square-foot restaurant space. The, we have a med spa upstairs, an additional spa upstairs, an apartment, and then a part of the spa also has to be downstairs because we don't have an elevator. That's the interior.
So, looking, looking at the minutes of the prior application?
Yep.
It indicates tenant, the first tenant space would be a teahouse with some retail?
Yep.
Could you just explain what that is more specifically?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So, the idea is to have a teahouse serving... Yeah, tea and food. There's a full commercial kitchen in there with alcohol, tea-inspired cocktails, small plates, and then the retail component would be things that people can buy while they're sipping on tea or eating food or whatever. And then outside of that is the patio space with a walk-up window. Ideally, we would like to be able to offer pastries and coffee in the morning. And then beyond that is another space that has to tie into the upstairs, which is all the spa and then the apartment.
Is there a boutique function? Is that the retail that you...
So, originally, I was gonna have my boutique, which was located on Main Street, be in that area, but because of the layout, I probably will not be able to have my dress shop in there as well.
So, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, Dave, but what's the... You said that the teahouse was, the teahouse was combined with some other space. I'm sorry, what you, I can't remember what you described a minute ago, but what's the size?
Oh, oh.
Retail, right?
So, yeah, so the teahouse was, the space that's considered the restaurant portion is 2,000 square feet, and then beyond that, there's a single unit on the very end, but because we don't have an elevator, we were told that the spa now has to have access to that downstairs space.
So is the, I'm just trying to understand, how was it presented the first time through in terms of how big the teahouse would be?
Same, everything's the same.
And the seating?
Yeah, that, nothing has changed from the, what was presented in terms of the...
Square footage.
The square footage. That's all been the same. We didn't increase or decrease.
The square footage for each?
Yes.
Use category didn't change either?
No. The only thing that was changed for, not for the restaurant portion, was the spa portion because we couldn't have an elevator. So, we had to, according to, for ADA accessibility, the end unit, I believe, when it was originally presented, was gonna be some sort of a bakery or an office space. That no longer can be because of the fact that the spa needs to have an ADA accessible room downstairs.
So there'd be no active use in that?
There will be.
It'll be part of the spa, you said?
Correct.
Okay, sorry. And there is a memo dated September 1, 2022, that lays out the sizes. Peter, you had a question?
Yeah, could you, I was here when you first presented this, so pretty familiar, but frankly, I can't quite recall. So can you just remind me, the purpose of the four outside tables, are they connected to the restaurant?
Correct.
And you're asking basically to change from, was it 8:00 PM to 12:00, right? Right?
But not the, not the outside tables.
Oh, so that's what, that wasn't clear to me.
That's where we got confused, too.
Yeah, that's where we...
I was confused about that point.
No, we just wanna be able to, if we have like an event or something inside the actual restaurant itself, I wasn't sure if that was like regulated. But the outside, we're not here...
I wanted to clarify that, because I'm sure people would be concerned with outside noise.
No, 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 we're not here for that.
So the outside would remain at an 8:00 PM starting time?
Well, I prefer if we could go to 9:30, like, Charles and Lucky Boo's.
I have to say, again, I think at the time, the applicant agreed with the 8:00 PM hour, and then we imposed that coupled with coming back in whatever it was, 16 or 18 months, so that we could make sure there weren't any effects on the neighbors. But, you know, the other interesting question, I guess, is just reading the minutes and trying to refresh myself, because I was here as well. Again, it's, it's a little, it's a little bit unclear whether the 8:00 PM also applied to the inside portion to me. So could you, because I remember during the presentation, if you'd just excuse me for one second. In the initial presentation, I guess there was some discussion by the applicant about the spa was by appointment typically 8:00 to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Saturday 8:00 to 3:00, closed Sundays, except for afternoon tea reservations. It's just a little bit unclear to me whether the 8:00 PM cutoff also applied to the inside, but can you explain more?
Yeah, so the spa has a room in it that is a gathering space, so that is, that's reference to if we were to house like a tea, like, function in the spa, we're not open past 8:00 o'clock at night. So if we were to do some sort of a tea event, it would be, it would be, you know, not past 8:00, because that's our hours now.
So I guess I'm just curious, why was it that in the application you were asking until 12:00 AM?
For the, for the teahouse.
The teahouse downstairs.
Downstairs, not upstairs.
Right.
Was that in the previous application?
Again, I...
It's unclear.
It's unclear, and I think...
This is why I asked, what exactly do they want?
Right, and I think it could be interpreted as the restaurant part also being subject to the 8:00 PM.
Yeah, because I think when we went and visited yesterday, it was said in the minutes that it was 8:00 to 8:00 outdoors, but we're not disputing that. That's, that's not, we're fine with that.
Yeah, and that's where it gets a little bit unclear to me in terms of just how that was phrased and whether it was intended to apply only to the outdoors or not.
I think we'll have to clarify in our motion exactly what they're asking for, what we're voting for.
Right, but I guess taking a step back, you know, midnight is quite late. I mean, I think it's one, and again, I guess there's other issues in terms of at what time would you not seat somebody or take any more orders versus somebody who's already seated may sit there for 45 minutes or an hour, you know, talking or eating or whatever. But I guess from my perspective, I think it's, each, each different restaurant is, got its own set of characteristics and circumstances in terms of who the neighbors are, whether there's residential, where the parking is, and so forth. So I don't, I don't think it's one-size-fits-all in terms of what others are doing. It's really an issue that the commission has to decide, what do we think is appropriate here? But you always have the opportunity to come back and try to change things and expand them, whatever the hours are, if, you know, and then if you can come back and show that there aren't issues, we haven't had problems and so forth.
That's kind of why we're here, is to understand and to make sure that there's no limitation for us to operate a business in this space and be able to do business in this space. So if we do have an event, for example, say someone says, "I wanna do an event here," and, and they wanna go until 9:30 at night, that there's no, there's no limitation.
Yeah, we can lose the costume.
Do you see what I'm saying? It's not like...
I, I understand, but as, as the vice chair said, I mean, it's really reconstructing where we think we left off and what we're comfortable with now, and I guess my, my reaction is midnight is, is late for this area, I think, to be having...
The reason why I say that also is we, obviously, we opened up another business in town on Main Street, and it's a gelato shop, and our, we're open until 10:00 o'clock at night. And we were like, people were still coming at 10:00 o'clock at night for gelato, and we're like, if they're coming for gelato at 10:00 o'clock at night, people are still out and about. So when we said... So, when we said, when we said 8 o'clock, we're like, that, that pigeonholes us, that gives us a very short window, and especially if we don't open up at 8 a.m. for certain days or whatever we decide to do, I just don't want to get to the point where we're turning people away. Now, we're open until 8 o'clock right now at the gelato shop because it's winter, but the creamery, I believe, opened until 9. We're going to change our hours and go back to 10 very soon, just because the weather's improving. So, that kind of gave us a taste of what is kind of going on in town in terms of where the people want, when, when they want to come out and, and have things.
Well, summertime, people start their dinners later. They don't start dinners at 4 o'clock. When they go to the beach, they come back.
I just want to make this simple.
Yeah, no, me too.
Yeah.
So, what I understand is that you guys want to keep the 8 p.m. closure outside, so no one will be sitting outside.
No, 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 no.
Well, if they sit down, we have to tell them to leave. That's where I don't, like, if a customer comes at 9, he says, you have to get up.
Well, you're not going to seat anybody after 8 o'clock.
Correct.
That's, that's all you can do.
Correct, right.
Yeah, we're not coming here to, to change that.
So, that's, that's clear.
No.
Now, inside operations, which is your teahouse primarily, right?
Correct.
You're asking this commission to consider giving you till 12 o'clock or 12 a.m.
What did they give us?
Well, that's unclear from, from writing, but what you're, what you're trying to clarify and ask us.
It's not the outside, the outside.
I understand. Can, can you operate inside the teahouse till 12 a.m.?
Correct.
That's your request?
Correct.
Okay, got it, all right. Keep it simple. I, I have one other thing that I think I'd like to clarify, this gate, okay?
Yes.
You're also asking a change in that, right?
Yeah.
Now, you guys never actually had that on your original plan, right?
No.
And we had a discussion about, what, access to the place and not having people park there late night, so we, we had a discussion with you, that's how I recall it, and I think we all kind of concluded it was a good idea to limit access to that place, so, so we agreed on the gate. So, you're still okay with the gate, but you think the fire marshal is having issues with it, right? Is that?
We don't want the gate.
You don't want the gate?
No, no.
We, we do, personally, we don't want a gate. We actually did a little bit of research to see if there's anybody else that has a gate, that operates a gate, and we were not able to find any on Main Street, so we were just.
I got it, I got it. So, regardless of what the fire marshal said.
Yeah, no, we don't want it.
You don't want the gate.
We don't want the gate, and then the fire marshal said that he didn't want a gate, so that was that part of it.
All right, that clarified my questions. Thank you.
Anybody, commission members, anybody on that end? Chris?
I was just curious, so you would still be, so, because this also isn't clear in the materials from before or in an update to this, so you would be selling alcohol until midnight inside?
Yes.
Okay, so, because I think that changes the conversation around what would be here, that maybe, that's something else for us to discuss, because there may be like a whole separate.
Does it state in there what time it was supposed to be operating the business? Because I don't remember it.
Well, it's not so much what times you're operating the business, it's about us notifying the public that alcohol will be sold in that area.
It was.
We, I believe we got, yeah, I believe we got that approved.
We got approved for alcohol.
So, that, that's the part that's not clear here is exactly what was approved and, that's what I'm, that's what I'm sort of confused by myself.
It does say.
It does state that we did get approved for alcohol.
Right, but that's where the, the 8 o'clock cutoff part is the part I'm confused by, is it selling alcohol until?
On number nine, it states that it's outdoor seating till 9 o'clock, 8 o'clock, on number nine.
Okay.
So, if you look at the pre, the approval.
It's number six.
Oh, six.
I don't believe that.
Okay.
We ever had that discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, we have to, we have to definitely have more discussion on that. Is there anybody else on the commission with questions at this point? If not, I'm going to put it out to the public.
I do have a question. Apologies, I wasn't on the commission when you came last time. How many, how much seating do you have inside now?
75, I believe.
75.
Okay.
And that was the same as when we applied?
Yeah.
Did you submit a seating plan for the inside the first time?
Yep.
Yep. Everything was submitted.
I didn't see that.
It's not in the package.
Right. If not, going to go for public comment, so you can sit for a minute and then we'll come back to you?
Sure.
Anyone in the public who would like to speak on this application? Yes.
Hi, my name is Heidi Heller, and I own the property at 176 Main Street under the name Robin Sisters LLC. It is the adjacent property to the left of the property owned by Linoche's. It is a Victorian house that we painstakingly restored over a six-year period. We have four lovely, long-term residential tenants who appreciate the quiet backyard space that our home offers. The proposed seating space is less than six feet from the property line, and their house is one foot from the property line, and in some cases, on it. The space that they are proposing, where they would have outside seating, is adjacent to where our tenants use the backyard. I'm not opposed to them having a business, and I'm not opposed even them having a teahouse, but having a teahouse with seating for 75 people that offers alcoholic beverages is not going to be a quiet endeavor, especially one that is open until midnight. Because if there are 75 people that have been drinking, and they can only be served inside because the outside part is closed down, you know what happens when these things end. At the end of the night, people who have been drinking are going to exit the building, and they are going to sit at the outside tables, and they are going to talk with their friends, even though the place is closed. And if it's six nights a week that we're talking about, we have four residential tenants who all work, and they're all going to be listening to these people outside talking because there simply isn't this amount of space between the buildings. I feel that granting the hours until midnight is completely unreasonable. It's going to impact our tenants' sleep quality, the noise from the drinking, you know how it is, and we have a lot of drinking establishments now in the center of Old Weathersfield. When we bought our property, there was only the Old Town Bar, then came along the Charles, then, now, we're also talking about the Bed and Breakfast that's going to be turned into a restaurant, and we've got Linoche's on the other side of us. So, now we have four drinking establishments that are going to be impacting our tenants. Cars starting up, car doors slamming at midnight or whenever they decide to go home, the headlights turning on, shining through our bushes, those are our bushes between the two properties, noise from the dumpster. So, they close at midnight. So, you know what happens if you've ever lived next to a restaurant? The empty blind bottles get dumped into the dumpster by the staff working late at night. This is a pretty loud noise. Who is going to monitor the compliance that if, okay, fine, they're not going to serve outside after 8 p.m., that's great, but at midnight, when this thing lets out, who's going to monitor that people aren't sitting at these tables, hanging out with their friends, enjoying their evening? And if you've ever lived by a restaurant, you know there's problems with rodents, raccoons, skunks, mice, rats, eating food that has been left out on the tables, tables that hadn't been serviced since 8 p.m. Litter, napkins, straw covers, cigarettes, smoke from the cigarettes. We're talking six feet from our backyard where our clients, where our tenants enjoy their backyard space. When people drink, they smoke. And at midnight, when this lets out, and they're sitting on the tables back there until 1 a.m. with their friends, they're going to be smoking, all this drifts over onto our side in the summertime, where our tenants, who do not have air conditioning, have their windows open in the summertime. People cutting through our arborvitae's as a shortcut to get to their cars because, you know, there's not enough parking. If they have 75 people, they have limited parking spots, people can park on Main Street, sure, but people are also going to be parking in back on Robins Wood, they'll cut through our arborvitae's to get to their parking, and that's just how it goes. I know, we have properties next to restaurants, this is how it goes. My, I would urge you not to renew it, but I understand, you know, it's commercial slash residential, and I am not opposed, again, to them having a business. What I am opposed to is them having a teahouse that is now turning into a bar.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
I'm the executive estate of Alice Norsegian, the property I grew up in, which directly abuts the parcel. The activities on this parcel are visible both from the first floor and especially the second floor of our home. There is a fence erected by Mr. Linoche, which provides some buffering, but the rest of the buffering is totally inadequate. There is a sad-looking roll of arborvitae's that have been put up, which he agreed to. We asked for emerald green, fast-growing arborvitae's instead. I mean, I'm sorry, didn't have time to provide you with pictures, but the buffering is slim to nothing. Robins Wood Drive is inherently and completely residential street. Very much concerned about the impacts, as was stated, just the visual impact of people outside. Then we have this alcohol permit that seems to move around. I would ask that the applicants inform this body what is the liquor permit that's being applied for. Again, the concerns about the size of the crowd, we have issues with air pollution from cars, fumes, garbage, noise, and the visual pollution, the light pollution, all kinds of activities. There was an authorization of some music. Well, you know, again, we were told there might be someone playing a harp outside. Well, yeah, that's great. Who's, who's going to police what is actually played, how loud it is? I would like to see activities that have a normal routine, like it's a business up the street, it's called Linoche's Kitchen. They come in in the morning, they do what they do, they provide good food, and they close up at 5 o'clock. They don't serve liquor, and there's buffering with the adjoining parcels. Similarly, the gelato shop, there's buffering with adjoining neighbors. As, as Commissioner Hammer had stated, you have to look at each parcel differently. And this parcel directly abuts to my house, and it's interesting, Mr. Linoche had told me that he, when he resided at the property owns, adjoining this property, he had concerns because people from the Charles were, were urinating on his property, patrons of the Charles, after they finished whatever they're doing there. So, it's interesting to me. He was very much upset, it was disrupting his sleep, he told me. I have similar concerns about the negative impacts. There was a list of concerns that were stated in the original petition, which is now expired, the original special permit that's expired. We have no chance to assess what these impacts might be because unfortunately, the, the building process has been dragged out. But I, I don't know why, and as far as the gate goes, that was something that was agreed to. Mr. Linoche said he would lock it every night, you could check the minutes, but I don't know why, if, if the gate is important to prevent other patrons of businesses in Old Weathersfield from parking there, why couldn't a key be provided to the police and the fire department? I don't understand what, all of a sudden, why that's a reason that there's no, can't be a gate, that's have some kind of regulation, what's going on. Now, we're hearing that, oh, well, someone might be seated at 8, but they might be a slow drinker or whatever, so they might be there till 9. I don't think any of the people on this body would want to have those kind of activities going on in their backyard, 30 feet from where they sleep, 40 feet from where they And I think there's been a healthy discussion about what are the limitations on the commercial activities that we permitted on this property. Seems very amorphous to me. At most, I would prefer to have their activities confined to reasonable hours and inside, and at most, to stick to the original recommendations by the town planner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Norsegian? You, you're an attorney by trade, correct?
Yes.
Because I remember you were at the hearings, I remember you were, you gave quite a, your abutting property. What was your impression of the hours of operation? Because here it's 8 to 8 in the, in our regulations, 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. That was not just the patio, was it the whole operation, or was it just the patio, or how did you interpret that?
Everything, everything. I was, I was, I would prefer, you know, this, again, people have a right to petition to change the use, but I would prefer a pure residential with three townhouse condos. They didn't want to do that. It's their property, you, you approved it, but something that's like 9 to 5. There was talk about a doctor's office at one point, a teahouse, you know, I don't know who's drinking tea at 10 o'clock at night, you know, I don't, I don't know who needs to consume tea that late at night. Then, you know, a salon, okay, that would have, you'd think would have more regular hours, but again, it's something that balances the concerns of the abutting neighbors in a residential area with this commercial activity.
Thank you.
And, thank you.
Do anything, were you about, were you about to say something? I didn't mean to cut you.
No, I just, I thought there might be another question or something, but.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Serbanowitz. I'm a partner in the Robin Sisters LLC, the property that is adjoining at 174, 176 Main Street, which is totally residential house, and along with the properties on Robins Wood, these are all residential properties that are adjoining right to the backyard, and my understanding where the patio is going to be where they're talking about having, you know, seating for 16 maximum. I request that, you know, obviously, I wasn't here, I would like to adjust the hours, but if it was previously approved from 8 to 8, I request that it remain there for the whole facility, if that's possible, because the disruption to our tenants is going to be, you know, both from the noise, you know, the air pollution from smoking or whatever, the garbage blowing over there. Right now, there is no fence, the only thing, the barrier there is our arborvitae's, which I, today was, went through there picking up garbage that had already blown over. The way the parking lot is set up, the cars are going to be coming in, the lights are going to be shining right, directly into our properties. I don't know if there's any plans to put any type of barriers in place to prevent light coming through and/or garbage and reduce the sound levels. The, as far as the gate, I would put that in the hands of the fire marshal if he prefers not to have the gate for safety reasons. I'm all for the safety side of things. So, again, going just for number one, if it was pre-approved previously for those hours and those quantities, then I am not here to, you know, counteract something that was already previously approved, but as far as for hours of operation, I would strongly request not to have that extended, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Wertz. I live on Robins Wood Drive next to Mr. Norsegian, and the back of our house abuts this property. And I find it appalling that there will be outside dining with the lights like is going on at the, at the restaurant across the street with music. I mean, how, this is a, when we moved here 55 years ago, this was totally a residential neighborhood. It is now becoming a commercial neighborhood. Now, the. Now, the applicants own, I believe, the beauty salon, which abuts the old Academy Museum on the other side. And that's an internal organization. It's very busy, and I think they're doing very well, but it's internal to the house that they rebuilt and spent a lot of money on rebuilding. And it doesn't affect us because it's not at 9:00 o'clock at night, and people aren't starting their cars at midnight or 2:00 a.m. I find it appalling that this is encroaching on our, on our privacy. So I don't really have a problem with internal activity, but the external lighting, music, nighttime is, to me, appalling. Now, maybe the idea of outside dining when the, when we had the COVID was applicable, but I don't think it's applicable anymore, and I think the council should take that in mind. Anyway, I hope that Robbinswood Drive and the surrounding neighbors can live with what's coming. Granted, there is more commercialization, but we didn't move next to Wal, next to Walgreens or Stop &amp; Shop, we moved into a residential neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
You have any questions?
I have questions. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes.
Kevin Walsh, again, 18th Avenue Drive. First of all, I just want to say the comment about I didn't move next to a Walgreens is well-taken. We all buy our houses, and we know the kind of area that our house is going to be next to, and the question here seems to be, how has that changed? I, I find myself a little conflicted. On one hand, we want young businesses to succeed and nice young couples to make it. On the other hand, though, I have to say, I've just heard a couple of things that kind of bothered me. There was a question posed, I think to you or from you, as to whether or not this was originally intended to be a midnight operation. I just happened to see the original application, and the original application actually indicated, I think to Mr. Hughes's question, or Mr. Drake's question, I don't know who asked the particular question, but the original application actually indicated it was, the entire business would be operated only until 9:00 p.m. 9:00 p.m. There was never anything about midnight. And then the actual approval that was made after consideration by this board, many of the members are still on it from 2022, was that it was not limited to the outside of 8:00 p.m., the entire unit, including outdoor, was limited to 8:00 p.m. There was never anything that I see in this record indicating that they intended to stay open until midnight, and I think the original application itself was limited to 9:00 p.m. If I'm mistaken, I have four kids, I have never made a correct comment in any of their lives, so if I'm mistaken, please just tell me I'm wrong, but that's how I read the original application. As I also read some of the comments in the public hearing, what I noticed was there was some question as to whether or not there was being, it would be like a engage and then review and reassess period, but as I read the minutes in particular, I have it right here. The, the reassessment was limited solely to the outside area. There was never any suggestion that some, that this committee, this board might reassess continuing the operation of the business until midnight, for example. That was in the public minutes that I saw, and again, I, if I'm mistaken, I'm just going to read that into the record if I could for one quick minute. There was a comment made by Ms. Lake. It reads, she's proposing about five tables with four seats each. She's okay with putting a term on the outdoor dining stating that she would come back in a year or two for renewal. As I see that in the public comment, the renewal or the reconsideration, reassessment had only to do with the outside patio, it had not to do with the interior operation. And again, you all have greater access and knowledge than I do, and I defer to your collective wisdom on this. I think for me, though, kind of the bigger issue is when the discussion here was started, there was an acknowledgement by the commission that the special exception has actually lapsed. If the exception has lapsed, you all, I don't think legally, I'm an attorney, really have the ability to kind of renew that or breathe new air into that, in particular by adding additional changes to a permit that's already lapsed. I would, you know, I think somebody who has a special permit that has lapsed would be well-advised to quickly get the permit completed as it had been originally, lest they run into problems down the road, because someone like me can say, your window to do that is no longer there, that has closed. Instead, what I think we see is that there's an application to augment this special permit, and I looked at your regulations, I don't see anything in the regulations that suggests a person can make a special exception to a special exception or a special permit. I suppose anything is possible, but it, I'd say ultimately, from the perspective of, is this something that can be even entertained? I don't, I don't, I don't see how. But, you know, again, I go back to my first comment, which was, it's a young couple, we want to see them survive and make good of this particular business and endeavor, but on the other hand, seems to me they are very close to having this kind of collapse on them for not having resumed the issues. I was going to start by asking the commission, do we know that all of the conditions were otherwise satisfied? And I think what the answer is no, and that is the reason that technically the exception that was filed is currently invalid. So anyway, for all those considerations, I, and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Okay, I guess I, having looked back a little bit again into the packet, the memo dated September 1, 2022, from our then planner Denise Bradley, does indicate as to tenant space one, shared space approximately 2,400 square feet, shared by Tea House Retail and Spa. It says hours 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then it had different hours for some of the other spaces, but I think that's the space they're seeking to extend until midnight, and I guess my reading of condition six is we cut back on the patio by one hour so that that had a cutoff of 8:00 p.m., and that in 16 months, we wanted them back so that we could determine whether the patio specifically, I think, was causing any, any impacts that required further adjustment. I think that's kind of where we were. And I guess I have one, looking at that same memo on page three, I'm a little confused under the parking analysis, where it goes through space by space and then recites what the parking standard is. So for example, for the, the retail portions, it was based on square footage, but for what's described as the hospitality, it broke down two different restaurant spaces. And again, I think we, I would like more clarification based on what it was that was in front of us the first time, but looking at this right now, you know, 1,927 square feet was designated as the spa, and that was subject to five spaces per thousand for that operation. And for the restaurant part of it, there was one restaurant space identified as a bakery, 400 square feet, with eight seats at the tables and four counter seats and three employees, and then another restaurant space with what called the Tea House, 629 square feet, six table seats, three counter seats and three employees. So I thought, and we'll call you, why don't you come back up, but you, I thought made reference to 75 seats in the restaurant portion, so that's, that's what I'm trying to get in sync with, because I'm not seeing 75 seats on the.
I think that was, I think that was occupancy. I don't know if that was seats, I think that was occupancy, based off of the, whatever the architect drew up.
So you're saying occupancy in terms of people who might be standing as opposed to seated?
Yes.
You're, you're also saying you did submit a formal seating plan as part of the first application?
Yeah, there should, in the, in the application, it should have had.
Right, which we don't, we don't have in front of us right now, but I guess I, I would very much like to just clarify the, the benchmark that we're operating from here? Yes, Jim? Sure.
When you met with the town manager, I mean, excuse me, the fire marshal about the gate, was it just one of you or both of you?
Not me. I went down there.
Just you and the fire marshal alone?
Yep.
No one else? Did you talk to them?
Well, no, he was actually, we were in a big meeting at that time, remember? He was saying that he wasn't really for the gate. Remember that day we sat down with everybody all downstairs next to his office?
Yes.
We had all the people on that table. They did the HDC meeting?
Yes, yes.
And he was not for the gate.
Oh, so the HDC meeting, so there was multiple people talking about this gate?
It was in the room for HDC.
Yeah, they share space.
Like a pre-planned.
They share space.
Offices, yes, yes.
But so it was just a conversation between yourself and the fire marshal, reference to this gate?
Yes, the other day, but the other day, it was all the departments in the room. Steve was inside there that day. Remember, they were all sitting in that room, and everybody was checking it?
Yeah.
And then Anthony, the building official, was there before he left.
Whose concern was it about who's going to manage the gate? Was it the fire marshal, the engineer, or the building department?
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal, who's going to lock it?
No, he doesn't want it, because he's like, if the other per, the other parts of town don't have gates, why do you have to have a gate? That was word for word.
Oh, because I was wondering, because they have a Knox Box system in Weathersfield, because they spent a lot of money on it. And every self-storage facility in this town is fully gated, only accessed by gate, every single one. And so I can understand he would want an engineer or an architect, like how the gate's going to work and the hours, because he may not understand it clearly, because I remember the discussion, that's why I should have asked Mr. Norsigian, because the neighbors were concerned about people just coming in and turning around, because it also wasn't clear at the time about the, the agreement between the town of Weathersfield for the use of the land, because there was a letter from the historic, Weathersfield Historical Society, which actually owned that piece of land, because you have a use agreement with the town on that, so that wasn't all put together yet. So the gate was so people didn't inherently come in and turn around and bother the people on Robbinswood, well, that was one concern.
How does that, real quick, sorry to jump, how does that bother the people on Robbinswood?
No, that was, it was part of the discussion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And the people there turning around at night, would, I think, it might have been their headlights, I can't exactly remember, but also just other people other than yourselves using the property, because that's what I remember, it says right here, 164, 166. That's, it was just part of the discussion, and that's how we came to these, you know, 10 different points.
Can you read what the fire marshal wrote? Because I wasn't, unfortunately, I didn't get the letter.
I didn't give you a copy.
He didn't give me a copy. Could you read what the fire marshal wrote about the gate?
Right here.
It just said that.
He just wants the gate, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it says that how he's, but he doesn't have an engineered print or anything from it, I'm sure.
Could you just read what he write, what he wrote?
You don't have a copy of it?
I do not, I'm sorry.
I can read it, it was an email to me, sorry, so you're going to have to listen through the mask, but you'll, you'll get it. So the fire marshal came up to me, it must have been the day after you spoke with the fire marshal, he asked me where the gate came from, and I showed him the minutes, I said it came from the discussion at the public hearings, and he said, well, we never saw a gate, it wasn't proposed on the plans, we would need to see that. And I showed him the minutes, and then he responded with later, or actually the next day, with an email saying, Dave, this email is a follow-up to our conversation earlier today regarding the planning and zoning stipulation to require the owner to install a gate or access control to the rear parking area. Earlier today, the applicant owner came in and asked if I was aware of this requirement. I informed the owner that I was not aware of this requirement. I also spoke to Derek Greger, who also was unaware of this requirement. Next paragraph, I am not in favor of having a gate on this roadway. Typically, the owner-applicant proposes gates for securing their property. In this case, it appears the town is requiring the gate. I am not aware of the town requiring such on any other private properties. Gates typically slow down emergency access. Also, I'm not sure how we hold an owner responsible for securing the gate. Anthony Dignati, Assistant Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, Town of Weathersfield.
Thank you for reading that.
Oh, that's fine, his comments, but if, and I respect that, absolutely, but if he has presented a plan, like from an engineer, because he would have to have, they would have a set of prints that were approved for this whole job, so the gate would have been on the prints, correct, before you started construction?
So.
That were approved by Derek and the fire marshal?
Yeah, when we sat down that meeting, like I just said.
Well, that was before you started construction?
Yeah.
So that memo is dated when?
The other day.
Right, you started construction when?
So I'm just bringing it back up, because I was coming here for the hours.
Right.
So I said, why don't we just discuss that about the gate?
But the gate would have been on the original prints, correct?
No.
No.
Because he didn't want it.
It wasn't on the original application, that's?
No, but on the original approved prints that, their final draft.
No, because he didn't want it.
I, I don't think they.
I see what you're.
I don't think they ever modified the, the prints.
Right, because there were two sets of prints, because the historic district commission had one set of prints, we had another set of prints, and then they had to, halfway through construction, the elevations were off, so they had to go back and get them smoothed out, so the prints at that time weren't true, true, complete, correct.
Right.
So, and then it just got reconciled, which, that's fine. But if that gate was not on the print, then it was just, it was omitted, but as I said, there's an absolute engineered way, and maybe if there's not an engineered way, which that's not addressed in here, because if we ask the marshal with, it's just like any other thing, like photometric drainage, anything else, because access controls are everywhere, maybe he doesn't understand it's only at the end of the day, now when the building's occupied.
But he said, why do you have a gate when other people in the town don't have a gate? He can't even get one at the Cove, so why do you have one? That was his word. You want me to?
Well, the reason, the reason you have one is because we had a long discussion about this, and.
I regulate the parking lot, though. I don't need a gate to regulate my parking.
This commission had a long discussion.
I know, I was there.
About disruption to that area.
But why are we being held for only disruption?
And you guys agreed, and we, we made that condition, we made that condition.
One, one at a time, please.
I'm not being rude, but I'm just being like.
As, I'm just putting it in the perspective of when it was presented by the people that were here, the neighbors and everyone else, this was taking in everyone's concerns about what was going on to get you to, yes.
So I, I understand where both parties are coming from. Actually, I'm a very neutral person with all of this, and I feel like just as there's a term with outdoor seating, I feel like respectfully, because every project we've done in town has been with the utmost respect and dignity, every project. I don't think we've ever received any type of negative feedback from anything that we've done in town to date, at least if we have, we've tried to rectify it. If, if we, if there's a problem with the parking after we receive our CO, and there's a term to it, and the gate would be the solution at that point, but putting, imposing such regulation on us without there being an issue, I feel like is creating an issue. So to be respectful and fair is, okay, if we are not doing what we said we were going to do, and we're, we're having an issue with regulation, or there's any type of problems after, one after another, then at that point, a gate would be a resolution, in my opinion. And then, and then at that point, I feel like we would have to come together with the fire marshal and the town engineer, because as of right now, they said that they're not in favor, and no one else has it on the property, so it would be, it would have to be a discussion, I think, at that point, if there was a problem. But putting, talking about all this now, when we don't even have a parking lot in, I think is just putting the cart before the horse if.
I don't really care if you have a gate or not, personally, doesn't matter to me. It's just that's what we presented, when the people came here and everyone testified and the neighbors and all that, that's what we agreed to them, so kind of now changing it now, it's kind of like taking all their time and effort and going like, well, forget about it, I really don't care if you have a gate or not, doesn't affect me, I don't care. And, but the fire marshal, if, there could be a presented solution, that's all I was saying. And it, whether the Cove and all that, that is irrelevant in that conversation, and whether anyone else has one or not.
Right.
But that's irrelevant, but if there's an engine, all I'm saying is an engineered solution, is there one? There probably is, but it's just like the lights and all that, I mean, there's not lights everywhere, but I agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, and I also want to be like respectful of, I don't want to say this in the wrong manner, so forgive me if this comes out wrong, but budget-wise, that it, that could be a very costly, almost so costly that it wouldn't financially be feasible to put together an engineered. that it wouldn't financially be feasible to put together an engineered gate with a this and that. It's very sophisticated from what it sounds like in order for it to be appropriate for a fire marshal and a town engineer to sign up on. So I think putting a term to it, showing, proving us, proving ourselves to you guys and to the town and to our community that we're, you know, doing what's right by everybody, at least trying to, um, and then, you know, doing some footwork with, with how could we get a gate if that would be the, the, the resolution to it all? Um, I'm sorry.
And I just, uh, I want to, so not having the benefit of being here, but reading the minutes and seeing the record, I just want to make sure that everyone is sort of in the same understanding that I am. So the original application, the original memo from September 1st, when he originally came, said the hours of operation for the indoor use that's associated with the outdoor seating is going to be from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. From the minutes, it appears that the outside seating was limited to 8:00 PM.
Yep.
Okay, is that, then are those, if those hours, that 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
It was eight, 8:00 AM for the, 8:00 AM to, it was always 8:00 AM. It should be, at least.
For the teahouse, retail and spa, so?
Because we all, even my spa opens at, at 8:00.
On the memo from the town planner, it says 9:00 to 9:00 PM.
Okay.
So, and that's not your original application, but I assume that she cut and pasted that, but it could be. So you were looking for 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
Eight, 8:00 AM, um, 8:00 AM to, to 9:00 PM, I guess, for all the other businesses that are in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the, the restaurant portion would be until 12:00 AM, but not during the week, obviously, just the weekend, um...
Was that the original proposal, or is that what you're asking for now?
That's what I'm asking for right now.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure we're starting from.
Yes.
Okay, so the original proposal that was approved was 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM for indoor use. The outdoor seating was going to be limited to, uh, closing at 8:00 PM, or no longer serving at eight, after 8:00 PM. All right.
And we're not asking for an extension on the outside patio, I just want to make that very clear, that that's not, that's not what we're asking for.
And so you are, so, thank you.
Internally.
So you, you are asking for the internal to go from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, or midnight?
Yep, just on like Friday and Saturday night, if I have to be specific.
And just so everybody knows where those tables are, they're in between my two buildings. They're not in the back by somebody's bushes, they're not by somebody's fence, they're not by the road, and they're not five feet from anybody's property, so I just want to make everybody know. So I know you all, everybody knows what, it's in the...
In the notch, is it in the notch there?
Yes.
It's the first notch, which only hits the next notch.
I gotta remember that.
Right there, which will have, uh, raised beds, which I proposed in the plans, there'll be raised beds along the side here, and I'm going to put raised beds in the front.
There's still that one parking, was there one?
Yes.
At least, like?
Or two, in the front, for the tenant.
Yeah, then there's, you're, like, you're going to put bushes?
Yes, bushes here, bushes here, for my own tenants that sleep there
Got to, got to, got to.
every night.
Um, just one more thing bef, and, and then I'll stop. The other thing, I just, um, um, I also want to make sure, so just because, uh, someone had mentioned it, that, the, the applicants do have a valid operating special permit. It was approved by this commission, it has been filed on the land records, it has not lapsed. One of the conditions had a, uh, time period of which it was allowed to, um, uh, operate, that had a specific time period that has come to an end, so that was, that expired on December 31st, uh, 2024. So just in case anyone is confused or isn't aware, they do have a valid special permit, their special permit is valid, and the, uh, section of the regulations that allows a special permit applicant to come in to modify a special permit, uh, including conditions of a special permit, is, um, in Article 10 Administration that says a special permit may be amended in the same manner that the special permit was originally approved, which is why the applicant is back before us tonight, going through the same process to address specifically the hours of operation, but also these other two modifications that they're requesting.
With, with, with a public hearing, but I, I guess I would just add, if they weren't, if they weren't seeking to modify anything about what's happening inside the building, they could have been here just to reactivate the lapsed outdoor seating, no changes to the physical seating and no changes to the 8:00 PM cutoff. So the, the extra part that's before us is their request that we go back and change what has been described by Dave as not expired, but a condition that says you stop at 9:00 PM for the restaurant, and, you know, we, but, so we have to, we have to make a... First judgment is, is there any reason not to just reactivate the outdoor with no changes to it operationally? Second question is the hours and the, and the gate. And, and I guess the only other, you know, I, I just have some questions, because as I read the, again, the town, former town planner's memo, and the breakdown of space, and she describes tenant space one as a combination of the teahouse, the retail, and the spa altogether equalling 2,400 square feet.
Yeah, so that's when I was planning on doing tea parties, like, down there and, and making it like a all-around type experience, but I don't feel like that's, makes the most sense. So it would be, um, so upstairs, there's like the gathering space, which you can see in the plans. Um, it's just creating that tea space up there as well.
Yeah, that, that's kind of where I'm, I'm, I'm losing you a little bit, just in terms of, as I mentioned, the parking table that's in that same memo basically identifies
So...
in essence, maybe, you know, 800, it, it identified 1,967 square feet, 1,927 square feet, as I, as I believe in being something other than, than restaurant. So that, that's, so what I'm really trying to understand is, are you seeking to have restaurant activity in what for parking purposes was characterized as spa at 1,900 square feet?
No, our spa still takes up the entire second floor, um, minus the apartment, so that would, that would make sense.
But, but then where's the balance of the space in the building, because he had the accessory apartment at 300?
So I don't think she was figuring that the kitchen, so the kitchen takes up part of that square footage, so the six-something must just be the seating aspect of it, not the bathrooms, not the, the kitchen. When you add in the kitchen and the bathrooms and the common area walkways and all of that, that comes up too.
But the, the, the teahouse was 629 square feet total, which, which included...
That's impossible, because the kitchen's always been like 400 square feet, so that would make the kit, that would make the teahouse...
Well, I'm saying, may, maybe that's referring just to the area where there's going to be tables and chairs.
Seating, that's what I'm saying, yes, yes.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense, yep. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, what, what, we have options here tonight. One option would be just say, we're going to renew the outdoor dining, give you 16 months, see how it goes, no change, and...
My, my vote would be, considering you haven't operated yet.
No, and that's, that's the one thing I wanted to say, is like, you guys gave us the approval, and you gave us an 18-month window, but we didn't even build the building yet.
I don't care if it takes you three years, doesn't make any difference, but...
No, no, no.
But my point is, we approved this before, and the idea is if, see how that was going to work, and you come back and change something, I just don't think we changed anything, so, let's move, you know, approve it as we approved it before, then come back.
I'm 100% on that, because it's very confusing with all this.
Well, it's, it's not that confusing, but I'm not sure what would change anything, because you really have, I hate to say, you haven't done anything. Why don't you do it?
No!
David, it's confusing, when they throw out 75 people, it's very confusing, because that's not what, that's not what this application said. So if they want to come back with some other
Yeah.
conditions, very clear, then we'll consider it, but for tonight, I, I just can't go there.
But we can extend it, that's what they already, we already proved, right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
That's what I think we should do.
Right, and the only part that lapsed was the outdoor.
Right.
Yes.
Extend and go.
But, but I think to your point, and I agree with you, Dave, that, you know, typically if somebody wants to come back and modify a condition, we have a track record of actually operating for some period of time.
If nobody shows up, then they're good.
Correct.
If a hundred people show up, we've got, so, we're just not there yet, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, you're not operating yet, like, I know, you're not easy, but that's why.
We don't even have electrical yet.
I think we should just extend it and, uh,
I think...
come back, come back, you know, one of you.
I'm gonna, Joe, did you have a...
I was just saying, how can we be sure the next time we don't go through all this again? You know, this, this, um, the issues that are coming up, I mean, we got to lay it out somehow, so that the next time they come in, we know exactly what's going on. We have to make a better presentation, lay out all the tables and get all the, the, the parking laid out, so we understand it. I mean, this, we're kind of shooting in the dark at this point. Yeah, oh, I agree, I agree, I got lost on the whole thing.
But, yeah, and I guess I, I, again, this was a while ago, it was a year ago, but I, I don't have a recollection of understanding that there could be 75, 80 people.
I'd be willing to bet, once you start your operation, a year from now, you come back and everything you asked for here, you ask for something different.
Probably.
To make yourself happy and everybody happy, that, that's why I say, I think we should just extend what you did and get yourself going, come back again.
And, and just, just the point of the, the gate, uh, if we just approve as is, again, uh, if the gate is not necessary, you take it out.
Take the gate out.
Take the gate, but, but, but we had concerns about the gate, and we should stick to it.
Well, the fire, I, I'd be honest with you, the fire marshal was pretty clear he didn't want it, so I, I, I think you'd take the gate out. Now, the fire marshal's always win.
Well, it's not a safety issue, he just didn't understand why we asked for it. We asked for it because, because of the meeting that evening and the concerns of the neighbors, we were respectful to them. So to change that would be inappropriate in my mind. Unless the fire marshal said in his memo, "This is a safety issue, and we don't want it because someone's going to get hurt", I, I don't think we should remove it.
But I think what we ought to...
Two, two quick questions, please, for the record. Um, so, are you, uh, so tonight, we're looking at our, the previously approved application,
Yes.
previously approved parking table,
Yes.
um, as it stated in the packet for tonight. Nothing has changed about your plans to use the space or the square footage or anything from your original application?
Um...
That would change the parking requirements for this?
Not that would change the parking requirements, no, I mean, if anything, there, there's no bakery that, that's changed.
Can you, one more time, explain what's happening to what was to be the bakery?
So, we wanted to put a bakery in, and then I think there was like eight seats or something, um, which caused, actually asked for more, that asked for more parking, um, but because we don't have an elevator, that now becomes an office space, so we're actually not having any seating in there, that's just an office space for my spa. So that's actually reducing the, the necessary requirements for parking.
Okay, um, so there, there, we probably, so we're approving something that is different than, from this possibly, but that's on a different conversation, so my only other, um, question wa, I mean, have, has there sort of any other changes to the intended sort of use of the space, the parking, and then, did you, um, did you show where on the property the gate was intended to go to the fire marshal when you talked to him? Did you show him a plan of the property?
I highlighted the same one I gave you guys. This one here.
Yeah, and...
Thank you.
So, I guess just to pick up on what Chris said, I think, you know, it seems like where a number of people are leaning at this point is potentially reactivate the patio as it was previously approved, put another look-back term on it, and potentially not change, not modify any of the conditions for the inside, so that's definitely a possible path. But I guess I wanted to ask, expand on Chris's question, when he asked you, "Are you seeking to change anything the way the inside is going to work?", um, and I think you answered it in terms of not that would affect the parking, so I'm going to expand the question and say, "Are you seeking, sitting here tonight, to change any of the internal uses regardless of whether they would affect parking or not?"
No.
Okay.
Because even in the meeting, it said bakery or office, that's what we went in for.
Right, and in terms of the other space?
Nothing.
No change?
Nothing.
Okay, all right, so I think we should, I'm going to let, uh, the gentleman with his hand up. I'm just going to allow a limited, uh, question from the public again, so if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, sure.
Um, we'll call you back in a minute. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name's Paul Serbanow, it's, um, based off of the, uh, map, um, of the property, it specifically has a wraparound patio going to the back of the building, which has an arrow indicating patio, walkway area with seasonal outdoor seating, which is behind the property, or behind the building, not just limited strictly to front. So, how can anybody else understand or define where the tables are outside? And when this, this first come into, uh, public, um, discussion, uh, with, you know, the HDC and here, um, it was our understanding that we were talking about a, a tea room for the med spa section. So typically, when that was brought to, you know, presented, it was going to be something very small, maybe a table or two on the front porch, um, now we find out that there's a full commercial kitchen, planning for a full restaurant, that's drastically different than, you know, what our understanding was previous. So it seems like the intended use of the building, and from discussions tonight, that things aren't clear or documented exactly what the uses are for.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, all right, so any other, uh, questions? Commission members, applicant, you can come back up?
Could you just let me know what it was, um, approved for, for use? What was the actual use approved for?
I, I think we, we approved the use as it was described and presented to us through a combination of the plans.
Yep.
And I don't have in front of us an interior layout plan, but it was a combination of the plans and the way it was presented to us that evening, so I, I don't know what the plan showed in terms of a kitchen footprint or, or details, or, I'm assuming we had that, Dave, but we don't have it in front of us now, we just have the site plans.
Yeah.
Right?
It, the, excuse me, we had to go through HDC for, um, any mechanicals, any of that stuff. Um, that's all been approved through HDC, it has been a very long process, and I apologize for that. Um, I just wanted to...
We also weren't approved for the hood for HDC?
Yeah, and, I mean, everything we've been doing, we've been trying to do by the book as best as, as possible, and, and I just want to state for the record that, you know, we did put Emerald Green Arborettes, um, as, you know, when, when the neighbors asked for it, we went out as soon as possible, and we, we bought the Arborettes and we installed them, and...
Immediately, before the building was even done?
Yeah, I mean, anything that people have asked for, we've been really, um...
I pick up the garbage every day, outside,
Yeah.
from all three properties.
And I think it's coming out beautifully, and it's, it's really truly going to be an amazing addition to the community. Um, just like all of our other projects, I feel like Lenochi's Kitchen, Nochi's Delato, my salon, the house next door that our tenants live in, that we restored as well, like, everything that we've done, we've done with, with, um, love for this town and love for the people that live here.
And respect to all of the other people.
So, we're doing our best.
Yeah, so, but, but back to your question, so, look, you've heard, you've heard comments, and I, I'll have to say where, where my, my thinking is at this point is to address the reactivation of the patio, not, not to go back into the, inside the building, leave it as it was approved, so, you know, and, and I don't think we're in a position to be looking at modifications to that right now, without you having been in operation, but in terms of what you are permitted to do under that existing approval that hasn't expired, again, I'm going to refer you back to the plans and the way it was presented to you, because I, it, it's going to be dependent on what all those specifics are, so you need to make sure going forward that whatever you do is consistent with that, and if you want to do something that's not consistent with that, you'd have to, you'd have to seek a precise change for whatever change you might want to make.
You're saying any interior changes?
You know, and anything that's, if you're, if you're creating more, what I'll call, assembly-type space, where there's, you know, service of food, service of alcohol, um, that is different, you know, again, we'd have to look back at the old plan, but assuming that that's different, you're taking up more space to do that, then I think that would be a change that would have to come back.
The square footage that we already got approved for, right, for what?
I think you can use the square footage for the uses
Yeah, yeah, okay.
that you described, as you described them, but it also goes back to how you described them to us
Yeah.
at the time, right, you know, not, not that I'm going to cram 300 people and have banquets or whatever, I'm just to give you an example of, of what wouldn't be within the scope, so, yes, Chris.
Just for the purposes of this, I would just say that the previous application... Just for the purposes of this, I would just say that the previous application was for alcohol, for the liquor license sales at the teahouse that was 629 square feet with six seats, so not the 75 people, not any of that, that wasn't included in it.
The six seats were bar seats.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And so, okay, so you have a CO for, a certificate of occupancy for 75 people in a 629 square foot space?
Um, I believe it's an assembly. I think that's how we got it constructed, so I think that's how they do it. I'm not, again, this is not my forte, but I believe that's how it goes.
But calculations from an architect and a plan do not dictate the usage that we approved. That's what we're trying to get clear on.
Right.
Even though that plan says, architecturally, this space could occupy 75 people, that does not give you the right to put 75 people in that space and operate as an assembly, because that's not what was approved.
No, Dad, I understand. The teahouse was never going to be six people, though.
Yeah, so...
So that didn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
Six seats.
It was six table seats, is what it says.
Six tables.
That was my point, yeah, 629 square feet and six table seats, is what it says, and three counter seats and three employees, is what it says.
So there's sufficient parking for six tables and whatever counter seats, and that's what you're limited to, even though the space could house 75 people. See, that's a different story, totally. I just want to make sure you understand that.
Yeah, I think what, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is, is like, for example, the bakery, if it's not being used as a bakery, doesn't mean you can move those tables into another part of the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just to pick up on that, my, you know, my recollection is, I think we were under the impression that whatever the seating was, that would accommodate whatever the use was. I don't recall anything being mentioned about standees only with larger events. So if that's something you wanted to do, I don't think that's part of your existing approval.
I guess I was under the impression that there's, when it's approved as a specific or zoned, I don't know exactly, I think it said restaurant space. I believe that's what it got approved for as a restaurant, the use, excuse me, the use restaurant. And then the architect submitted the plans, I believe, and it says on the plans, occupancy load, and, you know, we had all the tables laid out and the retail section and all that stuff, and the little bar area, that is what I'm just referring to. Is that what you're referring to as well?
My recollection of this, I don't have the interior plan, is that we were, I don't think we were presented with a scenario where there would be people standing and being served food.
So do we need to come back?
Or alcohol. I think it was whatever the seating plan was.
They have upstairs, we'll bring it, we'll find it.
I think it would be good to understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, I think it's, whatever the fire code or the building code might allow in terms of how many people you could fit in this room is a different issue than what was approved for zoning purposes.
Parking is based off of, when we had to come and apply for our parking lot, we had to have 25 spaces, I believe, and that was for the amount of people that were going to be occupied in that building.
Well, I think that's based on table and chair count and maybe employees, so again, from our perspective, you may need X number of parking spaces because it's based on tables and chairs, and...
Do we have any of that information tonight?
And if you want to have, you know, 50 more people standing there, not with tables or chairs, then A, I think we have to look at that in terms of whether that triggers some other parking need, and B, even if it didn't, it goes to the intensity of the use and the special permit that we're granting, so...
Yeah, my recollection was that this was a moderate to low-use operation that went to nine o'clock, and that's how I approved this. I'm hearing something different now. I don't understand what I'm hearing now.
So we better...
But it's different than my original vote. That's, I'll be very honest.
Yeah.
So I can't, I can't proceed with even considering what you want until I clearly understand where we're at here.
Yep, so typically, a teahouse has tables of four to six. I, in my mind, when we did all the layout and everything, it was to present to you guys, this was the concept. Now that we're getting closer to it, it's now becoming a reality of, okay, can we, how can we pay the taxes, the this, the that, everything with, I think...
Six tables.
Six tables. So, I think for us, it's more of like, okay, how can we financially sustain in this building that we dumped pretty much all of our savings into, while also opening a business and running a business efficiently and effectively? So it's not, I don't think unreasonable to ask for three hours extra on a Friday and Saturday night, six hours total. That's why we came here tonight to ask for that. It's three hours, because if we're already granted till 9:00 PM, it's just till midnight for Friday and Saturday night. And then the gate, like we talked about, was that, and then the renewal for the patio. That's all we're here for tonight. That's it.
And again, I'm just, last time, I'm just going to say it's important that however you go forward, whatever our decision is tonight, that you, that you do it in accordance with our prior approval and not deviate from what that approval is. And if you have questions, you can talk to Mr. Elder, our town planner, in terms of going back into that, but that is important. Anything further, or you?
No, I believe...
Okay, thank you. All right, so we've got to decide if we'd like to close the hearing, if somebody would like a motion by Dave to close, second by Peter, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Would somebody for discussion purposes like to make a motion on this?
I'd make a motion that we approve the original application, maintaining the hours of condition as previously approved, and extend that for a period of 16 months, I believe you said, Dave, right? Starting, so that we don't have this recycling, starting from the time that their operation commences. So if it takes them another six months to start, that doesn't count, you know, so...
But just to be, bear with me here a second, Peter, just so that we're very clear here, your motion, I think, is, Dave, we...
Want to refer to the number of the approval?
Sure. I think what you're saying is you move to modify condition number five of the original special permit approval regarding outdoor dining. No change to that condition as written in terms of the 20 seats.
Correct.
Excuse me, in terms of 16 seats and the number of tables that were shown. The only change is the 12, December 31, 2024 expiration has changed, and it will now be a 16-month period, beginning from the start of operations, and at the end of the 16 months, they need to return to the commission to revisit the outdoor dining and determine if it will be extended or any conditions imposed.
That's my intention, yes. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Dave seconds, and to be clear, we're not making any changes to anything else on the original approval other than that one condition.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? And again, I guess from my, you said this, Dave, others said it, I said it, but I just think on the rest of it, I'm not comfortable and don't feel we have the information to change anything.
Again, to me, they should get in operation and come back, easy, and they know what they want.
Okay.
And the neighbors can see it.
Right. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, my only thing is just, you know, I think that Bill tried to get at this, but that changing the actual, like, hour section of that condition would have been like changing a fundamental aspect of the...
Well, that's why we're not changing.
Yeah, that's why we're just leaving it the same, and it would have been...
Okay, anything? Go ahead. Peter, that's it?
We're good, let's go.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the application is approved as stated in the motion. Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right, and next, we have the fiscal...
I'll take that one. One of those back.
Oh, sorry, I have your stuff.
I know, we would have figured it out.
Fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan project recommendations, yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Vlada Ragonis. I'm the Director of Capital and Strategic Initiatives for the Town of Weathersfield, and I'm going to go over the CIP submission and review process for you, and then go over the 10 highest rated capital improvement projects.
Can we, excuse me, one second. Could I just ask anybody in the audience if you could take your conversation out to the hallway, because we can't hear the next matter?
You might just step outside, we saw this...
Thank you. Okay, so annually, the project, the process starts in the fall, where departments are asked to submit capital improvement projects, then that happens in September, and then in November and December, department heads meet with the finance department, myself, and the town manager and assistant town manager. We review their proposed projects, and then at the end of the fiscal year, I'm sorry, at the end of the calendar year, they go ahead and submit their requests. In January, we start meeting with the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee and reviewing the submitted projects. The sheer 44 projects were submitted and 41 were ranked. There were three that were removed from our list and moved to other requests for sources of funding. Those three that you're not seeing on here were floor scrubbers for the schools, that was moved to capital non-recurring expenses, the police department's communication center upgrades for their dispatch, that was moved to another source of funding for consideration, as were the records organization and archiving project. So now I'm just going to go over the 10 highest ranking projects, from highest to number 10. The first project that was ranked the highest by the committee was 581 to 601 Silas Dean Highway Parking Lot, that's Corpus Christi. The town uses that parking lot by the Board of Ed and folks that work at Silas Dean Middle, and I'm referring to the north parking lot that's on that property. The town has a 27% responsibility for cost share for that project, so we are legally obligated to submit funding to reconstruct that project, and there would be two phases to that. Phase one would be drainage, which would potentially occur in 2025, and then reconstruction in '26. The next project that was ranked number two is replacement of the Keeney Elevator. That elevator was recently red-tagged by the state, and it does need to be replaced. If it's not replaced, it will need to be removed out of service. The next one is restoration of the gym roof at Silas Dean Middle School. That project for replacement of the chiller and air handler unit is in process right now. We did receive grant funding for 56% of the project cost. That roof was installed in 2008 and is out of warranty currently, and that is for the restoration, not replacement, and restoration would give us an extended roof life of about 15 years. The next project on the list, number four, is a generator replacement at the Callahan Site, which provides power to the shelter sites that power the radio servers and the HVAC system, and that generator is also at the end of useful life, and it's been failing here and there, so it does need to be replaced soon. The next project, number five, is the Straddle Hill Area Road Settlement, and that project, so due to drainage and sewer trenching that was placed in the 80s, there continues to be settlement, and it's believed that that was because of poor stamping of the fill. So now potholes are being created in that area, unfortunately, so reconstruction is being presented for the highest impacted areas, which are Silo Drive, Hayrack Drive, and, I'm sorry, yeah, Hayrack Drive and Haystack Road. Plans have already been developed, and they would include installation of extensive underdrain systems and trenching stabilization measures. There is an additional $400,000 that's been set aside for that project, and with this funding, it could be completed in 2025.
That's for the storm drain?
That's...
Is that what that is, or is it water and gas? All right.
It is for sewer trenches.
Okay.
Drainage and sewer trenches.
Okay.
Yep, and then another piece of the project, which is not this piece, but an additional piece, would be also doing similar type of improvements and reconstruction for parts of Straddle Hill, Scotts Way, and Willow Street. I'm just going to take a sip of water, doing lots of talking. Okay, number six is replacement of the Copper Mill Road Culvert. So based on a 2020 study that was conducted by our consulting firm, the culvert was rated in poor condition, and its expected life, service life is less than 10 years at that point, so we're reaching about less than five years now. That culvert is deteriorating, which is resulting in interior erosion and sinkholes forming at the surface, so replacement is critical to prevent a total failure. If that were to occur, the road would need to be closed down. The next project on the list that was ranked number seven by the Advisory Committee is replacement of the banquet room HVAC system, in addition to installation of the sprinklers for the fireside room and lobby. That unit is also at the end of its useful life, so that one's pretty self-explanatory. Number eight is miscellaneous drainage improvements, and this would include several mid-sized drainage improvement projects that would address reoccurring flooding issues. So it might include installing catch basins, drainage pipes, swale construction, or scour protection. And for this project, engineering would prepare the plans, and our physical services department would complete the construction, so it would be a nicely done-in-house project or several projects, and these issues are primarily in the right of way. Number 10 are two dam repair projects. This would include design and permitting for repairs of the 1860 reservoir and Griswold Pond Dams. And for this one, typically, services include tree removals, backfill, and installation of erosion control measures, and sometimes concrete walls and pipe joint repairs, and all regulations or all repairs would also be approved by Connecticut Deep. And then the last one, just going through the top 10, is replacement of the chiller unit for the town hall. This unit is from, was originally installed in 1986, so it's reaching about 40 years, so it's well past its useful life, and the unit services town hall and then also parts of the library. We're looking to have this replaced sooner rather than later, since emergency repairs are typically more costly than being more proactive. I was just going, my plan was just to go through the top 10, since we do have a list of 41 projects. If there are any questions on the projects I've already gone through or any others, please let me know. I'm happy to go into more detail.
Question? This is the first time I've been on the council when you've done this. Are you planning on putting forth all of these or only the first 10?
So these are put forth to town council, all of them are, and they ultimately decide on what is funded. These are the recommendations of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee that go to the town council, and then at the end of the day, they do choose the amount of funding and which projects, so this isn't necessarily reflective of what's going to get funded or in any amount. The committee was asked just to prioritize and not even to recommend, or not to recommend dollar amounts to allocate to projects, although departments did request specific amounts to support the projects.
Great, thank you. Of course.
So this is order of priority again?
Yes, it's in order of priority for funding first, you know, funding first. If we were to pick one project, or if the committee were to pick one project, it would have been that Corpus Christi lot, and then in order of priority down.
I just want to thank the town for that, since I'm on the Corpus Christi Church Council, and I've been involved in this thing for three years now. We're going to actually start the project this summer.
Yeah.
So we're going to need this money, so I really appreciate that.
Certainly, of course, and we did see that it was a legal obligation, so that's why it is ranked so high up on the list, so we know that this is coming. So we, we know that this is coming.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Other questions? Tony?
With reference to number seven and number 32, the Solomon Wells House and the community center?
Mm-hmm.
I drive by the community center, it looks mobbed, it looks like their rentals have got to be outstanding this year, and I've been told that almost every weekend has commitments. Same way with Solomon Wells, because of the rental facilities. Do you look at the income flow that's coming in there and have a sense of urgency on, on maintaining those and making sure that they are really kept up to par?
Income, and that, that is looked at, to be honest, I believe there, maybe around 30,000 to 50,000 a year per facility at the end of the day, when you take out maintenance. So the income, that, that's around where it is per, per building. That, that is a factor, but you know, we're, we're not in the business of making money. We, we do offer services as the town, so we do need to keep up our facilities as a service to the town and the residents. So, you know, income is considered, but I think those locations serve more purpose than just bringing in income as well. So it is considered, but it's not necessarily a deciding factor when it comes to, to rankings in, in that way. It's, it's also just need and urgency and use as well. So lots of different factors, safety always, also.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Sorry.
Cleared out the room.
I think we're going to go to the other business, anything, Dave? I doubt on number four. Can we go to the minutes?
Um, no, no.
Minutes, would somebody, we have them from February 19th, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Jim? Was it Jim? Second by, or was it Dave? Second by Dave, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Then we've got staff reports and pending applications?
Uh, just two, so we, for the March 18th agenda, we have two pre-applications currently that have already been submitted. One is for 1,000 Silastine Highway, the other one is for 207 Church Street. Both of those properties, as we know, 1,000 Silastine had an application that they withdrew, so this is a pre-application, and same thing with 207.
Both pre-apps?
Both pre-applications.
Okay.
And we still do have, we had talked about the Planet Conservation Development coming in for a presentation, so that might be a long, a long evening, based on the questions on those two pre-applications.
So the pre-applications are not public meetings, right?
They're public hearings.
Public hearings, right.
Correct, right, correct. So the, but I'll defer to you all, how you let those run, but I've, I've been involved with different towns where there's a, in some cases, there's a one-way dialogue where the applicant gets to present, and there's minimum response from the commission, but, so I will be sort of following your lead in terms of how much discussion we-
Any public comment? No? Okay. Correspondence? None? I guess the one thing is, did Lynn send out something about that annual dinner in Southington? I don't remember.
She sent it out after the-
The last one?
After the last meeting, and I, I know she's actively registering people, so-
Are we right at the deadline right now?
I believe it went up to the 26th.
Okay.
What's the date of the dinner again? Do you remember?
Now, I'm-
I can't remember.
It was either the deadline was the 26th or the event was the 26th.
Wait here, it's on the 27th, Peter?
27th is a, okay, 27th of March?
In Southington, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are you going?
Yeah. If it's 27th, I can go, yeah.
Okay. All right, uh-
Do you want me to have Lynn send out one last reminder?
Yeah, that would be good, thank you.
Yep.
All right, if there's nothing else, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
No movement.
No movement by Tracy, second by Tony. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
I'll let you recycle mine, too, if you don't mind.
Yes.
We don't make any like decisions. I don't make any decisions.